What time do you want us to make sure you're up tomorrow?
Six twenty minimum. I'm currently going.
Okay, it's recording, so if anyone wants to start.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. GBOs regular meeting. The Gerwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute forty-four dot six-two dot three-ten and Anchorage Municipal Code one point two-five Public Meetings. The Gerwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Gerwood Public Meetings Conduct. I'll call this meeting's order at seven oh one. I am Brianna Sullivan, co-chair Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor. Also in the room, we have.
Jennifer Wingard, Retsin Utilities.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Amanda?
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety Supervisor.
Thank you. Guy?
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Thank you, Guy. And Mike should be here momentarily, so for the record, we'll state when he arrives. Are there any disclosures tonight? Oh, Mike, you're online?
Yeah, I'm just calling in for a minute. I'll be there probably in five to ten minutes.
Thank you, Mike. So everyone is on the phone or in the room? Do we have any disclosures this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda tonight.
Awesome.
Thank you, Jennifer. And it says December twenty-first, but we know it's the nineteenth. And we have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. Any objections? Go by assent then, seeing no objections, the meeting agenda is approved.
Sorry, actually, I do have, I do have a comment.
Yeah.
There was, there was a discussion about moving one item from new business to old business.
Right, that number fourteen?
Yes, I believe there's a, there's a question about the time sensitivity of this. It would need to be, it would need to be something we would act on before our next regular meeting.
Correct. Okay, new business number fourteen is request for GBOs to write a letter of support for pause of Holton Hills land disposal pending completion of the area master plan as required by AMC twenty-one dot oh-nine dot zero-three-zero-E from Kelly Okeneck. And if.
Yeah, so I would move to amend the agenda to, to move item number fourteen and include it as an item under, I believe, number five, which is the whole hills discussion.
Okay, we have a motion to move number fourteen to merge with number five under old business. Do we have a second? Seconded by Jennifer. Any further discussion? We'll do this by voice vote. Say aye if you approve of moving, amending the agenda. Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, that is past five zero amended agenda. Okay, moving on to the minutes, we have three different minutes. If.
Sorry, point of order quickly. I think we just passed the amendment. Do we, I think we still have to pass the agenda. You do have to approve.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, we have the amendment. Now let's go back to the agenda with the amendment. Or approve. We do that by voice vote?
Yeah, you need a, somebody make a motion or to prove it.
Sorry, I think we have a motion already in front of us, don't we? We, we moved to approve the agenda and it was seconded and then we passed the amendment.
Correct.
I already need to accept the agenda. I already need to accept the agenda.
Oh, man.
I had that seconded, so I think we can now vote on that.
Okay, Amanda's hand is up. Were you gonna?
Nope.
Chut me? Okay. So Kyle, should we just?
You can just ask for anybody who has objections.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the amended agenda is approved. Now we have minutes from November twenty-first, both meetings and the November twenty-eighth meeting. Would anyone like to move to approve all three? Amanda?
Amanda, can I just really quick, I'm sorry, can I go back to disclosures? I want, I was looking for what number it was. It's number eighteen US Forest Service and GTC request for support. And I just wanted to disclose, and I have a standing disclosure that I work for the Forest Service.
Thank you, Amanda, for number eighteen. I would, I would rule that working for the Forest Service for this item under new business does not rise to a substantive conflict of financial or other interest, but you may participate in the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the minutes. We have three different minutes. I entertain a motion for separate or all three.
I'd move to accept all three minutes as written.
Thank you, Guy. We have a second.
Back into this, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Any objections? Okay, seeing and hearing none, those minutes are approved. Thank you. And thank you, Margaret. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comment to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. GBOs committees, GTC, LUC, and PSC will hold elections at their January two thousand and twenty-three meetings. GBOs seats D and E are up for election in the spring municipal election. Aliaska Highway Interchange Public Hearing Before Planning and Zoning Commission is on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and there's a link to send comments. MOA and GBOs quarterly meeting is Monday, January twenty-third at four PM via Teams and in person at the Anchorage City Hall eighth floor conference room. And we'll move to number one, introductions, presentations, and reports. Do we have anyone with legislative report?
I don't think so.
Well, Kathy Geisel?
Great. Yes, I need to update.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, did you call on me? This is Kathy Geisel.
I sort of did, because the mic picked me up. Would you like to say anything, Kathy Geisel?
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. No, I won't take up any of your meeting time. There'll be other meetings. I will have some things to talk about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, I don't see any other, any other members from the legislature, so Assembly members, Randy Salt or Suzanne, are they online?
Randy's here.
Hey, Randy, welcome.
Thanks. Probably not a ton to cover that Gerwood's not already aware of. Snow plowing, not a Gerwood issue. I, I think you're probably doing well with the snow. Of course, you've, those that travel to Anchorage have seen the challenges that Anchorage has faced. Real quick, in a nutshell, it comes down to a couple of things. One, there's not enough CDL drivers out there that are willing to work for what the MUNAS Palis paying. Potentially could take a thirty percent wage increase to get the numbers we need. Equipment runs twenty-four-seven and is subject to breakdowns. And our repair shop is open five days a week, so there's part of the problem there. And of course, last was we had two fairly historic snow dumps back-to-back that have really put the, the city behind on hauling snow out to the dump areas. But it is getting better and hopefully we'll have some good weather ahead. What's ahead on the Assembly Agenda? Next meeting is tomorrow night. Right now, probably the biggest thing I saw in there of any note is AO twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two dash one oh seven, which is really around ADUs, which Gerwood has experience with, that'll come up tomorrow night. As you're aware, last Tuesday on the thirteenth, we had the special meeting on Holton Hills. Thanks for everyone that came and testified by, testified by phone. I really do think it's making an impact, just the sheer numbers that Gerwood is turning out with. What I really want to see is, is maybe the item get pulled, withdrawn, or maybe more dialogue with CY that tells me that they are serious about, about meeting Gerwood's needs. Of course, I will vote Gerwood's intention, as I know Suzanne will. Let's see, and that item was postponed until January tenth, and we're hoping to get some action between now and then. We did have the initiating, or are initiating the tenure review of community council district boundaries. So that is following in line after the census, after the redistricting plan, and that'll move into community councils. So if you have anything you want to add to that, that should be coming up fairly soon. And there's also an item being worked on around the Gerwood Housing Service area to allow Gerwood to take more control of controlling housing in Gerwood and working towards workforce, affordable workforce housing. So looking forward to that in the new year. And then one of the things we passed was AO two thousand and twenty-two dash one hundred, which led to independent plan review. So anything triplex or lower could be hired out versus having to go through planning and zoning, so pretty happy about that. And I believe that is probably it for right now, so I guess any questions from those in attendance?
Any questions for Randy? Or online? From the board? Do you have a question?
Yeah, just a clarification. The January sixth work session is going to be in this room, and then that's a listening only, right? You get, the Assembly members will come here and members of the community can come and listen, but it's not an interactive, is that, is that correct, Randy?
That's correct, Kelly. Usually, if there's members of GBOS or other committees that have input, they could be called on to have input.
And is there a time yet for that meeting?
Uh, let me take a quick look. I, I don't.
Not on the Assembly calendar yet.
Yeah, I'll tell you in a second. I have five to seven PM.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Randy, for being here and all of your service.
Yep, and apologies I'm not there. I'm actually on slope, so I wish I could be there, but hopefully after the new year. Thanks.
No worries. Thank you. Next, we have Mayor's Office is Ray Schoolbank on meeting.
I don't think so.
Okay, and Anchorage School Board Liaison, Andy Allman, is in a meeting tonight with ASD, of course, and he submitted a brief update, specifically sharing that they made up or have not, they burned up all of their snow days, and they'll talk tonight about preliminary plans with the district for making up the days or asking for a waiver. And bus transportation should be fully restored as of December fifth, and otherwise they're focusing on the budget for the coming year. And he wanted to note that when they talk about the shortfall, it would be what happens if they ran services the next year as the same. They're on budget this year and expect to finish the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three year with, within predictions. It's the twenty-three, twenty-four school year that we're struggling, he said. Anyone with questions, he said, could email him, and that would be in the packets. On number two would be supervisor reports. Anyone in the room have a report? Jennifer, do you have anything to report?
No, I just wanted to point out what you already mentioned about the Alaska, sorry, the Aliaska Highway Exchange and making sure that people know that if you've submitted comments to GBOs, those don't go automatically. So if you, I know a number of people have submitted comments to this body about this interchange, so we would encourage you to submit those comments to.
Thank you, Jennifer, and I, I think that goes to each of us as members too, to remind people that have submitted letters that might need another reminder before that public hearing.
I'm away.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Please raise your hand or ask Jennifer.
Sorry, yes, but it is possible to stand on the agenda.
Mike, do you have an update or report, I mean?
I think most of the things are going to come up elsewhere. There is a, we are probably going to start talking about other issues around housing at LUC next month, so that will come up with GBOs as well, so our responses for longer-term issues, not just them.
Mike, Amanda, do you have anything to report?
I don't, thank you.
Guy, do you have anything?
No, not this time. I did speak to Chief Weston earlier. I believe she is attending in person, so she can fill everybody in, okay, for the Fire Department. Thanks.
Thank you, Guy. And I do not have anything to report. We did not have a cemetery meeting this, last week. Number three, service provider reports, five minutes. And is Chief Weston on the line?
Whoops. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hold on, I'm just, I'm actually next door, but anyway, hello, hello there. Well, maybe I'll turn my camera off. Just for my report, we have had five hundred and eleven calls, actually five hundred and twelve. We just had a transformer on by Crow Creek Road catch on fire, but it's extinguished. So five hundred and twelve calls so far, so a busy year for us. Look, we're going to end up within budget without having to ask for more money. Super happy about that. There is some changes in EMS responses coming down the pike, which are sort of things that are happening in Anchorage affecting us. We'll be, Anchorage Fire Department is taking the lead on messaging that, but that might change some of our budgeting forecasting. But other than that, things are going great. So, yeah, we had for this last month or so, so far. In December, we've had three fire calls and nine EMS calls. For the fire call, we had an appliance fire that was out on arrival the other night, and then we had a structure fire with an exterior structure that exterior area of a fire, of a structure that caught on fire, but we were able to catch it. We had ten personnel respond to that, and it was a good save. So that was a community effort. Thank you to the people who, the renter that called it in, and we were able to put it out and keep a girded resident in Gerwood. So happy about that. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Weston. Any questions in the room? Any questions online? Members of the public? Hey, thank you very much for the speedy updates. And Chief Ashay is here.
I know. I spoke with him earlier. He's actually working in preparation for the city council meeting tomorrow night, where they will be considering approving the contract extension for police services with, with us. And so that looks good on that side, and he'll let us know how that goes after the meeting. He did submit stats for October and November. It's in the packet, and you can see there, they are seeing definitely a rise in action now that the resort has reopened and music has returned to Friday and Saturday nights at the resort. We've been currently planning for public safety issues for New Year's with getting the tow company in place. The Aliaska Resort is working with us on getting them a hotel room, so they'll be on call for the night. As in the past, we've used them quite a bit for infractions and improper parking issues that we've had associated with the New Year's event. So they're, they're really focusing on that. Fully staffed, they had a staff member out on leave, but now is back, and so they're fully operational as of today. So otherwise, things are rolling along, and the big news is the contract for tomorrow with the Woodjoe event. We're all done on the MOA side. We just need it to be signed on the side, and we had a transition today in city manager, so we'll be waiting on the new city manager to sign the contract. And he's very well aware of it, Ken Colhays. He helped us actually get it to the city manager to get her signature, and so he will be able to take care of it fairly quickly.
Thank you, Kyle. Guy, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I just, I, I know Chief Ashay isn't online. But I just appreciate them putting these, their department putting these stats together. It's super helpful. So just if you could relay that to him, that'd be appreciated. Thanks.
I will.
Thank you, Guy, and thank you, Kyle, for his report. And on to you then, Parks and Rec and Roads.
Sure. I'll start off with the roads. We are definitely into winter operations. You know, we, we didn't get as much snow as Anchorage. But we still got snow, and our contractor did a great job of responding to it, and they were done with full plowouts in twelve hours each time we had event. And, and to repairing equipment right after that. So they are going to be working on some widening this week to get roads ready for the next storm. We'll be doing that throughout we go, and we'll be using the blower to help with that, and they just had that in the shop today, working on it. With Parks and Rec, we are very thankful to our volunteers for helping us get the five K and all the Nordic trails open. Last week, the compaction was happened with the snow machines, and then we were able to groom on Moose Meadows, Upper Meadows, and the middle section. And the five K has been open now for several weeks. It will be a solstice celebration for the Nor, with the Nordic Club. It's tomorrow night or Wednesday night?
Wednesday.
Wednesday night, and so they'll be out there. It's recommended that you maybe carpool or park at Park, Park in Lot A of Aliaska Resort, because it will fill up quickly at the end of Alberg, and we need to leave that open for emergency access out there. And so thank you to all our volunteers. There's a huge shoveling party on Saturday that helped to get the trail set, and that really sort of tuned it all in, so out there. As always, we're very thankful to Don Davis for helping us with trash retrieval on Mondays and our Muttmet collections. He's been a huge help there. As times we don't have, Mondays can be pretty busy for us, and so he's helped us out on Mondays, and we've been taking care of it on Fridays through our work here, so. And as always, our packet is, in the packet is our report, which gives all the details about our grants and things like that. Related to the finances, we're on pace for street maintenance to be within budget for the year. Depends what happens here in these last two weeks of December. But so far, we're tracking to be under budget there for the year, so it's looking good there. All our capital money contributions have been approved, and now it's just being transitioned through the finance department for our capital contributions for twenty-two, for our different departments. And then with parks, we are at eighty-nine percent of our budget. We have some lingering bills, but we'll be under budget there for the year, so should have a surplus there. Police is right where they need to be. This will be the most expensive time of the year. We're paying out right now all our impound fees for the end of the year, so we'll be paying that over here for the next week as, as we resolve those fire issues. And then fire, as Chief Weston says, they're, they're right within budget, and so it's all looking good for the different departments this year, so no crises and, and our contributions are taken care of. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions in the room?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, a question for you, Kyle. When, when will you be in a position to kind of reconcile the whole of two thousand and twenty-two?
So we will plan to give you guys a year in, a year in review summary in February. They, we call it the thirteenth month. January is the thirteenth month, and we close all the books for the previous fiscal year, and so by the end of January, by thirty-first, they have to have everything complete. So then I can go through and see all our records, reconcile all the build. So by the point, we'll give you a summary of the, of the year and what was completed and all of expenses for the different departments.
Will that be in the GBOs meeting, or do you think you have a special meeting?
We usually do a special meeting, because it's kind of long and boring, so it's full of numbers. So, so we usually just do a special meeting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions online? Guys, your hand up from last time?
No, I just, no, no, I, I guess a quick question and, and a thank you for the Roads crew for getting our streets open and running. I know last year they were able to clean the edges of all the entrances to the highways and move that snow a little bit. Is that still the plan for this year as well? To increase visibility as we're trying to get it in and out of there?
Are you talking about like where the swoops are for the mine roads as an example?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, no, we've been doing that. That's actually one of the first things that we hit right away in the morning, and then as the piles grow, grow, last week, they went out and cut down those piles, but if they do start to become bothersome, just let us know. We'll try to go and cut them down. But the first things that we do in the morning is town square, and then we run the bike paths, and then we start out in Alberg. So we try to get those all open, because DOT does pour all their snow right into those intersections.
Right, no, yeah, it kind, it kind of looked like they were doing that. There were piles in different places off the bike path this winter so far, so much appreciated, just, just. And I'll let folks know, or I'll, you know, that they can give you a holler if there's issue, but sure, appreciate the effort.
Yep, and DOT, if they have time, they'll help us with that as well.
Thank you, Guy. Any questions in the room or online?
I just wanted to reiterate what Guy said about the fantastic job clearing the snow. It's just so, I would have to compare what happened with Anchorage. Really appreciated. Three nights after the first time, we took our exchange student to film the mayhem at White's and C Street with cars hitting the red school speed if they didn't know better and breaking axles. So I just appreciate the difference between that and what happened.
Yeah, we have a little more experience with it.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you again, Kyle. Moving to public comments. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Anyone for public comment tonight? Anyone online? Hey? Do I hear a hand, someone?
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear someone. Could you identify yourself? And?
Yeah, hi, this is Soran Worth, Crook Creek Road, and I just had a question about the, the Holton Hills new amendment, the S one, and I'm just wondering what the board's vision is on how that's going to be vetted by the community? And, you know, how it's going to be transparent to the discussions on that amendment, or, and kind of like if anybody on the board can let the public in Gerwood know what's happening with this amendment that we're supposed to, where, where is that process? I didn't see it on tonight's agenda, so I was just kind of wondering if somebody can, can give us an update on that.
Okay, thank you, Soran. It is, it will be discussed on number five tonight, so we'll get there very shortly, actually.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, old business.
Kaylee.
Oh, Kaylee. Amanda, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to remind everyone about the Nordic Ski Club's Solstice Light Ski on Wednesday, and that's from six to eight over at the Two K Loop. They have all sorts of goodies. Come out and join the community.
Thank you, Kaylee. All right, we'll move to old business. Number four, update on current status of Aliaska Highway Interchange Project. Road Supervisor.
Just before we touch that, I just wanted to say one thing. I should have said this in my supervisor report, but what we're starting to do, we, we said a while ago, we're going to do every item now has a supervisor associated, so we kind of have an owner of, member of the board for all the items in old and new business. That's all.
Thank you, Mike. So it's like a sponsor, whoever's after each, each topic. So that's why Road Supervisor is in parentheses for number four. You have an update on that, Jennifer, or just reiterate what you had?
Just reiterating for, but Kyle, did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
No, the big, the next thing is the P and Z hearing, which you have, do you have the dates in front of you? I don't have that in front of me, but.
Yes, that was mentioned earlier on January ninth.
Mike?
Yeah, there is a, there is a link online for comments to the two P and Z. There's a specific link on the MUNIS website. We should probably just update this. Okay. Is it that? Yeah.
Yes, and if you go, if you go to that, it opens up a window for you to compose it there in that window, your comment. Okay, thank you both for that. Any questions in the room for number four? Kelly? Kelly?
At the risk of asking something I should know, where are we in the process? Like, is this approved? Is it happening? Is it being considered or just Reader's Digest? I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that, but I just kind of casually keep up with it.
It's in conceptual phase right now, but they're going to P and C. The C of P and Z will accept the conception.
Okay.
And so if they do, this is their, the design that they have is, is their main focus, their number one. And so if P and Z accepts it, then they're going to push forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's nothing else. Number four, we'll go on to number five. Update on current status of Holton Hills project. The Assembly Work Session is scheduled for January 6th with a possible vote on January 10th. The Land Use Supervisor.
Yeah. So thank you again to everybody for their comments and attendance at the last, the previous, sorry, at the previous regular meeting of the Assembly and the special meeting of last week to, to finish up the testimony. It was, it was really impressive seeing how many people were there. And I like the visuals as well. I thought the, the red signs made a very big impact. So those two, those two discussions were when the original HLV proposal and a modified version from HLV were in front of the Assembly as ordinances. There is now, I think technically, this item, which is, was at the back of the room. And I believe it's on the GPOS website. This is in S1 versions. This is another substitute ordinance. My understanding is this is going to be formally introduced tomorrow. And if it's voted in, then it will replace the previous version. So all discussion from this point onwards will be from this version. And it will still not be acted upon until January the 10th at the earliest. The Work Session, which is on January the 6th here, will be again discussing this item. So the Assembly members are able, because it's a public session, they're able to talk about it. They're able to discuss possible requirements. They're able to get clarity on things, et cetera. So that will be on January the 6th. And then currently, the schedule is for them to potentially act on it on January the 10th. I know some Assembly members would like to push back further. I think Randy said that. I was just coming into the room with that. He was talking about that. But there's, my personal feeling is January the 10th is far too, far too soon because we won't get clarification on a lot of these things until the 6th. So we can still make comments. I do not know if the 10th will be a public hearing or not. I think it's, it's scheduled. That will be clarified tomorrow. Again, I hope it's a public hearing. So we have the opportunity to actually speak to these changes, which I think are fairly significant. There's a lot of underlying here. Stuff removed. So this is a, in my opinion, this is a very different ordinance from anything we're seeing before. If Suzanne is online, she may be able to answer some of those questions. Or Randy, sorry.
Yeah. Hey, Mike, I just wanted to add, Suzanne wanted to push it back, I think, to the meeting afterwards. And I actually was one of the people who proposed pushing it forward to the 10th. And I'll just share, the main reason why is we have two Assembly members that were elected to State House that they're facing their last meetings. One will be tomorrow night, one will be later that week after the 6th. And, and one of, one of those, I'm not going to say which, I'm speaking in code, you probably figured out, I think is, is, is on the side of Girdwood. And I didn't want to lose that person if this were to come to, to vote on the 10th. So that's kind of why I pushed for that, if it were to happen. FYI, thanks.
Thanks, Randy. Yeah, I mean, there are all sorts of tactic considerations as well. But yeah, the, my feeling is there won't be enough time to, to have a proper understanding of the changes, what that really means and, and consider all the amendments. But it's not my decision. It's the Assembly's decision what they do with us. So, so again, how this stands is, this is the thing, hopefully after tomorrow, this is the thing that will actually be in front of the Assembly for action. So all discussions will work from this and amendments will work from this. And what they actually vote on will be basically this plus amendments. And there is a meeting here on the 6th, but the Assembly will be going through this and explaining, getting explanation for what it would mean. And then the 10th is the actual date where they will perform first action or the earliest point at which they can perform any action and debate it. I'd like to touch on the question which Soren said earlier. I think the, we're not going to have a, we're not really going to have a meeting except for land use on the 10th, on the 9th. We don't have any scheduled meetings between now and the 10th of January. And we do have things like holidays in the way. So I don't think we're likely to have any scheduled meetings between now and then. So that's why I think it does not, in my opinion, it doesn't make sense for, I hope the Assembly doesn't perform a, have a vote as early as the 10th. We as a board can consider having other meetings, because at the moment, we don't have anything scheduled.
Correct. Thank you, Mike. Anything else from the board? Okay, I see Randy, your hand in case you want to say anything else?
No, sorry about that. Thank you.
That's okay. Linay, your hand is up?
Yeah, hey, I was curious, with the work session that's going to be happening down in Girdwood, is it possible for the Assembly members to go look at the Holton Hills area? I know there was so much confusion about why it would be an issue to have all of the construction going down High Tower. And I'm wondering about the opportunity to show them why we feel that's an issue? Or is that not an option to have a baby field trip or invite them to come down early and designate the spot so they could see it before the meeting?
Thank you, Linay. I do know that they have another meeting in the afternoon in Anchorage. So getting here by five might be tight for those who are here in person. But that's my answer. I don't know if Mike.
Yeah, again, I missed it. I think it's, I was coming in. Was there a clarification on what time the work session is scheduled for? Was it seven?
Randy has five o'clock.
Yeah, and the other, the previous work session is from roughly 2:45 to about 3:00. I'll tell you, say about, about 3:40. So we'd have between 3:40 and five to get to Girdwood and take a look at Holton Hills.
Yes, there might be some time.
Right.
Maybe.
In daylight?
But they probably couldn't do it as a body. Yeah, there'd have to be a public media. So they would have to do it.
It'd have to be self-guided. Any other comments in the room? Okay, Jerry or Carol?
Yeah, this is Jerry. I just agree with Linay. And one idea I had is just to write a letter to the Assembly people and ask them to drive down High Tower and visualize where the construction will be going in the school and to see it. Because it's quite obvious the Assembly has no clue. So we might write a letter to our Assembly people asking them to do that. Because I think Linay's idea is a great idea.
Thank you, Jerry.
And it doesn't have, I mean, it doesn't have to be immediately before that, that session. I think it might make sense for us maybe as a body to invite any of the Assembly members who wish to come down to Girdwood between now and the 6th. We can, we can, between us, we can probably provide guided tours.
And Mike, if I could throw out an option too, is Assembly members could come down earlier in the day and tour prior to the work session that starts at 1:30 and then just call in for the next two work sessions and already be in Girdwood. That may be helpful.
And we can set up the room if they would like to make meetings based in your tour.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. One of us could email that to the Assembly members.
What I'm saying is that's something that, maybe it's something staff can do, but just make sure, you know, they're just, send a, send an invite and then we will, between us, we will arrange a schedule either that day or between now and then, if anyone wished to visit and tour.
So just so I'm clear, you want us to send them an email invite for you? Or if that's okay, we can draft it or you can do it. Yeah, well, just let us know the details you want and then you can send it. Yes.
Yeah. So thank you, Mike. It's a great idea from the public. Thank you. Question in the room, Betsy?
Oh, they might also want to visit the unpaved part of Crook Creek Road because I know the residents that live on that part of the road are really concerned already about traffic that's going flying up there. And they need to be able to see that as well as figure out where the entrance to Phase 2 would be. Just quite a throaty.
I think it's both the paved part and the unpaved part.
Pardon me?
The paved part as well. There's obviously no, there's no footpath or anything else in the first section.
Right. And so the, the access to Phase 2 going to go isn't that, that's far up, that's not on the pavement.
Yeah, it's way up.
Any other questions in the room? Okay, go to Soren. Your hand is up.
Yeah, just to be clear, Assembly members cannot meet together on these tours. But representative or people from the community can meet with them or at least walk with them and help explain, you know, the route or explain, explain things. Is that possible? Just like folks from Girdwood, are they going to?
Yeah, they can't be in a quorum. So you can meet individually, or up to three of them. Yeah.
Yes, Soren.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Okay, Linay?
Yeah, just brainstorming here. I haven't been over near the school area exactly in a while, but I'm wondering if we could make some obvious signage saying Holton Hills Development Proposed Here. Do that there and on Crook Creek Road. Because with it being the holiday break, maybe Assembly members are coming down on their own anyway to ski, et cetera. And that would be an opportunity for them to get a concept before the meeting if they happen to be here. But I don't think there's clear signage on either Crook Creek Road or the school side. Is there for it to be obvious?
Thank you, Linay. I cannot answer for the school question or comment, but I know that on Crook Creek Road, there's still the notice of public hearing on the trees and the pink flagging. But if you're driving, it's, you need to go really slow and look for it. Anything else?
Yeah, I think that's why we would, what we would like, probably want to do is have a guided tour rather than have a self-tour.
Any other comments? Okay, I saw hands, but then they're down online. Anything else for this item?
Yeah, a couple of things.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So the first thing is, I, I think we've, while we've talked about it, I don't, we've come up with any, any specific action or decision on what we're going to do as far as discussions between now and potentially the 10th on this item. I think what, I'm going to make a particular suggestion then. I think what we should have is, we probably should have a joint meeting or something similar before the LUC meeting on the 9th. Let's at least take up some time and then allocate some time, well, not take up some time, do something productive with that time. So I'm going to suggest we have a joint meeting at either six o'clock or maybe even earlier than six on the 9th.
Oh, with land use, Mike?
With land use, yes, yes.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Right before the regular reading?
Before the regular meeting, yes.
I would be open to that meeting. I think that would be productive and helpful going to the 9th meeting to make time more useful on this.
That would be after the work session and allow us to be, to participate in that. And then the other thing I want to touch on is the, the item we moved that was originally 14.
Okay.
There may be comments.
Sure. Jennifer, go in the order you'd like.
Okay, we can take seven or eight.
Okay. You're sure? Yeah?
Well, actually, let me just go ahead and say, I think it might be also worth discussing, maybe having that meeting though for the 6th. Just because I'd like to see us as a community have all the questions and kind of our opinion. And I'd really like to try to get a feeling for what we're doing, for whoever we do have at the table with the work session to be able to discuss that. And I'm worried about just the speed of this. And, and the, the way that work session works, having only a few people who can represent the community. Anyway.
Thank you, Jennifer. While we're on that topic, would we like to suggest any potential days and then suggest a doodle poll and leave it there? Because the holidays are both on weekends.
Yes.
But that's presuming the room and stocks available, if we even throw out any dates that are along this holiday break. For a joint meeting.
Well, what about the, the sometimes just that week prior? Any, really, any kind of might work that week prior?
Okay.
I'd like to give it some time. So I don't think we should do it that Friday. But we could, you know, depending on what people's availability is.
Maybe we need second.
Sorry, second, third, fourth, fifth, anywhere in there, but not, maybe not that Friday.
Yeah, I think the second and third, we have, is it P second? And then Trails are dealing with the Trails plan on this, on the third.
Third. Okay, there is a meeting here the third, the fourth, maybe. Okay.
And if we do that, that would be instead of the, probably instead of the, maybe not.
Instead of the joint?
Yes.
Or which joint? They could come? Okay. Oh, leave it at that?
Right, we're going to also leave that for joint.
Yeah.
Depending on land use.
Right. So we could say that suggestion, the fourth or another similar date or joint before the land use meeting on the 9th?
Yes.
9th?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, I think the scheduling of it is administrative, but I think we've, we've committed to having a meeting before, definitely before the 10th and probably before the 9th as well.
Okay.
I'm also thinking for the 6th.
Yeah, before the 6th, sorry.
Yes, of course. Three, six. Okay, that is, thank you. I'll go to Seth and then Soren.
Hi, I apologize for my ignorance with respect to the Holton Hills flagging back there. But I'm a big fan of the trips down and getting a chance to see in there, especially if, as I understand it, the left end of the cul-de-sac would impede our ability to have an educational campus that moves up the valley. And, and I think so, that's a, looking forward, we wouldn't want this thing to keep us from possibly having a high school right near our school that's presently there five or 10 years from now. That's all I got.
Thank you, Seth. Soren?
Hi, I guess this might be a question Randy can answer, but the, you know, we just got this S, the substitute version laid on the table. And I'm wondering, because Randy had said that, you know, Assembly is going to want some direction from Girdwood. So we just have a little bit of time to really digest this thing. And I'm just wondering what, you know, what, what's the pronouncement from Girdwood to the Assembly on whether we endorse or reject this particular S1? I mean, how is that, in what form is that going to come through? Like a vote or, you know? Does anyone know?
Go ahead, Randy.
Yeah, so I'll jump in. Generally, G boss, well, so G boss speaks for Girdwood. So it would come in some form of resolution endorsed by G boss.
But if G boss doesn't have a meeting? If G boss isn't meeting, I'm wondering if, you know, what, what you want.
You would have to, you would have, I mean, you could bring it forward at the work session, but you'd have any time between now and January 10th to bring something forward. So other, other areas would have a special meeting or would, would have someone put it together and then come together for a vote on the resolution? Or it could simply be, you just don't have enough time to review it. Yeah.
So something like a land use committee vote might do it.
Okay, we have one clarification here. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, you may have missed this, Soren. Maybe it wasn't very clear over the microphone. We just discussed scheduling a meeting. We have a land use meeting already scheduled for the 9th. We just discussed scheduling a, an additional GPOS meeting or a joint meeting, either earlier on the 9th or more likely on something like the 4th, the previous week. So we will have a GPOS meeting before the 10th. We just have to decide in an exact time and exact format, but it absolutely will happen before the 10th of January.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
So just to that from a scheduling aspect, the room is really only available the 4th.
Okay.
So if you want to confirm that tonight or you want to let us know tomorrow, but we will need to get that scheduled, then Margaret's going to be gone. So we need to. So if you want to confirm that tonight or you want to let us know tomorrow, but we will need to get that scheduled, then Margaret's going to be gone, so we need to get that all posted.
Just to clarify, you were saying it's both four and it is available immediately before LUC on the night?
Is available before LUC on the night.
Okay, so they have a ten or five at the end, we'll consider. On or both of those?
Yes, those are your two options, otherwise we are booked every night.
So we'll do, we'll clarify that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. All right, Mike, going back to pre fourteen?
Yes, so so item fourteen, which is based on what Kelly did, I'm going to summarize it and I'm going to do a bad job and you can then fill in, correct, correct me.
So would you like me to summarize? Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
We're going to discuss who or how representatives are going to ask the work session. Sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to, but I was wondering if we do that before this, because this, I think, is the most. So, so would now, would that make sense before we kind of close off this scheduling business? We need to talk about who the group of representatives are at the work session, the Assembly work session.
At the work session on the sixth.
Correct.
Yes, the, the listening.
The listening. Yes.
Okay. That sounds great. Okay. Go ahead, whoever wants to speak.
I wanted to make the suggestion that we once again have an HHTAC representative, and I was going to suggest Anna Kramer, since Sam spoke last, so we just have our other co-chair in speech this time. And she's not online, I checked with her prior, just to see if she was available, and she said she would, so if that meets the will of the body, then that, she might be a good rep.
Thank you for bringing up HHTACs, because I know that that was probably imperative to them and if, and a backup perhaps, then GPOS, all works, so I would entertain whatever you guys want to say.
I'm going to suggest that I think we, I think the two of us had a good job last time at the the second session, so I'm going to, I'm going to nominate you.
Okay, I'm nominating you, okay, fair. And I would like to move it into any other members from GPOS who's wanting to go.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments online from board members?
You guys are going to do great at that, thank you for volunteering.
I agree with, I agree with Amanda on that, and yeah, I think a little familiarity with the group there will go a long ways as well, so.
Thank you, I also agree with the nominations in the room for both of you, and then if Sam would like to be present and they ask him questions, I think that's totally fine, he's invited, but he's but Emma's the spokesperson that we determine at this meeting, that's okay if everybody it's not a big deal.
Sorry.
Oh, that's good order of operations, Jennifer, thank you. So now this is like the lead up to fourteen, so Mike, take it away.
So so this is, this is going to get very technical and nerdy, I suspect. There's a, within the Girdwood Land Use Code, which is chapter, or chapter nine of Title 21, there's this process called area master plans. And I don't believe it's in the rest of Title 21, so sometimes it gets kind of forgotten a little bit by planning department. It looks to me, and I think Kelly and many other people, like the, the process of Holton Hills should go through an area master plan process, and I think we made that made that comment in our very first letter back in June. And my understanding is planning have determined that the Crow Brook Neighborhood Land Use Plan meets those criteria. And I saw Greg online, and I don't know if there's anyone else from planning. Who is, who is here from municipal planning department?
Ryan is here also.
This is Ryan Yell.
Okay, so Ryan and Greg, did you want to introduce yourself first and then we'll.
Yeah, this is Craig, planning director, and there's, I'll let Ryan speak for himself, the, the expert in the room.
Oh, thank you, Greg, yeah, so I'm Ryan Yell, I'm a senior planner with the planning department and happy to answer any questions you might have on the area master plan requirements.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, let's start, let's start from the big one then, so the to, to me, it looks, definitely my reading, it looks like an area master plan is required. And I think that, is there any doubt as to whether an area master plan or its equivalent is required for this project? Now, the question, of course, is about the equivalence, but.
Sure, so there is no doubt that an area master plan is required due to the requirements of the GR3 zoning district, in which is a predominant zoning district for Phase One of the proposed Holton Hills subdivision. However, we have determined that the 2006 Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan does suffice for the area master plan requirement.
Can you, can you explain why the 2006 plan meets the, it does suffice for that when it's, it was envisioning a quite a different type of development to the, the one that's holding ill proposing, I know we haven't seen the actual application yet, but it's different to the one that at least has been presented so far, both in scale and scope and type of development, I think.
Sure, sure, so the 2006 Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan was formally adopted by the Assembly, so because of that, it is an element of the overall comprehensive plan for all communities affecting or located within Turnigan Arm. And then second, it was adopted in 2006, but it was also effectuated in 2011 when the 16-inch water main was installed. That constitutes a development activity, so that effectuated the plan within seven years and therefore carried it forward.
Okay. I know there has been doubt since 2011, there has been doubt whether the plan had expired or whether it was still enforced. I definitely have been told that it wasn't something we needed to consider, I think early when we, early in the process of looking at the updates of the comprehensive plan. I do not recall where I got that information, it could have been some casual discussion, not a, a meaningful one. Has this been the policy, has this been the position of, of planning sort of the whole way through that this, this plan is in force? Or was there a recent change in that interpretation?
Did you say the water?
It's my understanding there's been no recent change.
Thank you. And the other question I have, and then I'm going to hand over to Kelly, I know who has some other specific questions. The, there is a, there is also a process in, in that section, in section E of 2109030 about the modifications to area master plans. So if the 2006 plan was, is acting as a, a area master plan, but what is in front of us is very different from what was described in the 2006 plan. Wouldn't we be, wouldn't there be an expectation it would go through a modification process? Or even a resubmital? Because again, that is, that is described, and there are criteria for how different something can be before it has to have a new area master plan, so if you could comment on that, and whether that would be something we have to worry about now? Or whether that's something that would have to be considered during the planning and title on process?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question, Mike, I, I think there might be a little confusion on the mechanics of it. So the plan influences the site development, the site development does not influence the plan. So that specific section of code that you're referencing is in terms of if the original owner or author of the area master plan comes in for a modification to it and is determined that through that modification it grossly changes the direction of the original area master plan. Therefore, you have to come in with an entirely brand new master plan to effectively replace it. If we have a site development that's not in conformance with an underlying area master plan through the planning process, we would point that out, and we would say it's inconsistent and therefore our recommendation is XYZ.
Okay, so that, so that is the process that you will be going through once there's an application in place.
Correct.
Okay, right. And actually, I said that was my last question, I have one more. The, the other question has come up a lot, a lot from the community is issues of impact. So, you know, what the impact is of this size development and this startup development, etc., on other infrastructure. And that, again, would normally be something you would expect to see in the area master plan. The conditions in 2006 were extremely different to the conditions now. So how does that 2006 plan answer any of those questions in a meaningful way?
Yeah, it's, it's another really good question, Mike, and if you actually look at the 2006 plan, at some of the comments that were received from the public at the time, there was some, a very similar comment to that, where it was about overloading schools, roadways, things like that, so that, that concern in 2006 was there. In terms of, you know, exactly how many lots, how many dwelling units? Are they going to be clustered, nonclustered, what that gets into, that's all going to be dealt with through the, our review of whatever plan comes in and what that looks like. We do not have an application on file right now, so I can't really speak to any specifics. Once we do have an application on file and we begin our review and have a formal recommendation, I can certainly go into more deep detail and depth about that. But in general, it's it's a tough question to answer, because it really is a chicken or the egg type of question and scenario in my mind. You know, do you build all that infrastructure in hopes that people will then locate there? Or do people locate there and then you build the infrastructure? And to that, I don't have a solid answer for you, there's a lot of hypotheticals there, and I don't want to be simply just guess on that at this point.
Understood, I think the question was more about the identifying any gaps or any, any things that are missing, so even if there was rather than actually decide when to do it, just identifying that this potentially has, you know, would require some other changes elsewhere, just that documentation would be helpful. And that obviously does not exist in the 2006 plan, because it's not comparing what we have in 2022 with, with this proposal.
Sure, sure, yeah, and I guess sort of the question I would kind of throw back to the board is you know, what, what data do they believe to be, you know, severely flawed in the 2006 plan? Because I guess where I'm sort of going with that question is, you know, we know that Girdwood has a housing shortage, we know that it's an expensive community to live in right now. If they're basing that concern off of 2006 housing costs and 2006 population, you know, the assumption is that those numbers are simply just going to go up. So I'm, I'm kind of confused where, where the flaw is, and you don't necessarily have to answer that question right now. But I, I would think down the line that's something that, that type of question and those type of answers that you're seeking, I think really need to be kind of pinpointed.
Okay, thank you, good clarification, appreciate it, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan, we have another question from the board here, Jennifer, do you still have something?
Sure, I think building on one of my other questions, I wasn't sure if I understood correctly. I thought that your question was about the validity, the perceived validity of the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan, and it was my understanding that when the RFP was awarded, that plan was in, in the pay board designated as no longer effective. And so that's not hearsay, that's, that's what we have in the in the awarding, in the RFP award, and so it was a surprise to the community to hear a year later that all of a sudden it was, and so just, just to clarify the record on that, unless I'm, unless I'm unclear on that. That's the community perception of the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan being not valid and invalid.
I think if I can just provide one, I, definitely the, the proposal that was received and voted as, as the highest scoring proposal does state that the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan was not in action. I don't remember if the RFP itself said the statement one way or the other, I don't recall.
No, no, it's, sorry, to, to clarify, it is, I didn't make the response.
Yeah.
Did you, did you catch all that?
Brian?
I, I did hear the question, unfortunately, the RFP was drafted by HLB. I work for the planning department, I, I can't really speak on any HLB matters, so I apologize, I'm not familiar with that language. I, I do apologize, but I'll just state again that we do believe the 2006 Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan to be valid.
Thank you. Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, and just to follow up on Jen's quote, question. The quote from CY Investments is, quote, "The approved area master plan was not implemented or granted a schedule modification within the seven-year time period required." CY Investments understands that the prior plan requires an update, a new public process, and approvals by the Planning and Zoning Commission and Anchorage Assembly." So the clarification we're looking for is what changed since that statement was made in the successful RFP response, because to us, that's a relevant, you know, for lack of a better expression, promise from the developer to complete that work. So you could take that one away, but I think that's a standing question, and we, and we really do need that clarification from somebody in, in municipality. Perhaps a question you can help with, I understand that, that your interpretation is that the 2006 plan was effectuated in 2011. However, we're now another seven years beyond 2011, so that would have expired in 2018, and we're looking at a development in 2023, so we're five years beyond expiration. What's your interpretation for why a 2011 effectuation would be valid in 2023?
Well, in the planning world, we live in plans that are effective for 20 to 30 years. So a lot of people tend to find that alarming, but if plans are constantly changing every five years, it's hard to sort of predict development patterns. If we stick to something for how a community or a neighborhood should look like 20 years from now, it's a lot easier to kind of have a more steady type of development pattern.
Yeah, I understand that that might be a conceptual function, however, I can't help but go back to 2109 and the code that says if it's going to go beyond seven years, there's a formal process, so, so conceptual is fine, but, but I, I want a code interpretation for why it's fine to violate what's written on the paper. And why your interpretation is that that wouldn't matter here.
So it's not a question of that it doesn't matter, it's a question of how is an area master plan determined to expire? And the expiration or the conditions at which a, a master plan expires is explicitly stated in code. So if an area master plan has to be effectuated within seven years in order to be valid, once it's deemed valid, it carries forward until it's either stated in the area master plan when it's going to expire or under the terms under chapter nine, area master plan requirements that details expiration.
Thank you, Ryan, we had more questions too. Would you like to follow up?
Yeah, I just have one more question. How was the water line? I mean, I'm reading here, implementation of the area master plan schedule, so the area master plan shall expire if implementation is delayed for more than seven years, so you're saying because the water line went in within seven years that that activated that plan until eternity?
Correct. Eternity is a strong word, but basically until it's deemed that it expires.
And okay, and then under, on what basis does the water line effectuate use of it? Because the water, the, the area master plan was for significant housing development. You know, to a layperson laying a water line does not a housing development make?
I guess houses need water. Water lines were put in for the developments of housing development there.
Wow, okay, we'll, we'll go to other people too, and then come back, let's see, first.
Um, I'm curious how familiar you are with the how the rental market in Girdwood right now, it's the biggest thing that's impacting the, the rental market in Girdwood now is short-term rentals. And the Airbnbs were not even a thing when the first Crow Creek Plan came out. So what's written right now does not even follow Airbnb's, Vacasa, all of that kind of stuff. I would say without, I'll take a leap and say that most long-term rentals that used to be long-term rentals are not. uh long-term rentals that used to be long-term rentals are now short-term rentals. There is nowhere to rent in Girdwood if you are trying to live in Girdwood. Recently, a rental came up and they had sixty offers in two days of people that wanted to move in. So the biggest thing for me is that short-term rentals aren't addressed in all of the Crook Creek Plan, and they are what is devastating to our town right now.
Betsy, could you clarify your question?
So my question is, how familiar are you with the rental situation in Girdwood, the housing situation currently in Girdwood?
Um, I I do apologize. It's a rather general question. Um, but uh other than knowing the general uh fact that Girdwood is much more expensive than Anchorage, um, I do have several friends that have struggled to find housing down in Girdwood because of that. So beyond that, I'm I'm unsure how to answer that question in a satisfactory manner for you.
How aware of you are you of the shortage of places to move in? We have homeless people in our town right now, including a family of a boy I worked with at school. And so to say that the Crow Creek uh Road Plan or the Crow Creek Area Plan is valid anymore, it does not address the short-term uh rental issue. And you need to be familiar with that, I think, before you'll be able to say, oh, it it covers everything.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I think your your point, Betsy, is uh very well made. That answers the question that Ryan asked back to us. In what ways don't we think or do we think that the two thousand and six plan is, you know, mismatched to the reality now? And that's a very good example of it, and there are a couple of others. So we should probably uh, you know, do the work and and document how we believe it's different. And that that we can feed back to planning and explain why it's uh we don't think it's the it's the right document to control us. So thank you.
Thank you. Chief Weston or Michelle, whichever.
H L B today.
Oh, hi there. Um, hello. Um, my name's Michelle Weston. I was a Heritage Land Bank off management officer when the Girdwood Area Plan was developed. And um I spent a lot of time actually walking on this property at that point in time. Um, and I've also been an American Institute of Certified Planners uh person, so had held that certification at one point. So I guess my question, when I've got the plan pulled up on my desktop right now, um, my question is, it talks in the plan about uh community development, and then it talks about um a bunch of other things. And I understand that it was based on the two thousand and ten or when we went through the uh the the uh Community Development Plan before or the uh uh Girdwood Area Plan. I I guess, is there anybody at the planning department that was here for the Girdwood Area Plan uh that remembers the assumptions that were made? Because it seems like this plan is based on the assumptions of that plan, and we know that the assumptions are different. Um, and so I guess when you say that it's good for imperperity, that really makes no sense to me from a logical standpoint. So if if this planning project wasn't uh proposed by the municipality, um, what was the planning department's plan to update this plan?
So the uh two thousand and six Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan is a Heritage Land Bank Plan. Um, the planning department certainly uh had an advisory role in that plan, but it was spearheaded by H L B, and they are the owners of it. Um, so any further updates to that plan would be done by H L B and not the planning department.
So then the planning department will accept any plan, but it doesn't ever have to be updated because if the landowner doesn't want to? Is that what you're saying?
So one one important thing is that um I am, in in my role in the planning department, we are legally, professionally, and ethically required to follow any plan that is approved and on file and considered current and valid. The two thousand and six area uh Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan was adopted by the Assembly as an element of the comp plan. So therefore, um, we are obligated to review any proposed development within its boundaries against compliance with that plan um until such time as that plan is either updated, expired, uh revoked, you know, what have you. Um, so that is why uh the two thousand and six plan remains current and valid.
Uh, so who, I guess, would be uh responsible for revoke? Who? What would be the mechanism that someone could revoke?
So generally, um, area master plans are approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. In this case, with the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan, it was approved by the Assembly and adopted by them. So we would defer to whichever the decision-making body was at the time. In this case, that'd be the Anchorage Assembly.
Okay, I think that's helpful because uh, you know, as even if I look at section five on page ten, there's a lot of just assumptions that are very different, especially with the market. Um, and I appreciate that. And then I just I'll just close with your comment about expanding the water line. You know, it expanded the water line, but it didn't actually put in hydrants up up Crow Creek Road yet, right? So for me, um, it's there, but it's not really there. So um, anyway, I appreciate your time uh listening to our community, and thank you for being here. And one final question, have you walked over this property and been up Crow Creek Road a bunch?
Uh, yes, I have. I actually lived in in Girdwood um some time ago, but uh when I was an employee, seasonal employee with the Forest Service, so I'm very familiar with Girdwood and uh familiar with this uh parcel as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, and thank you, Ryan. Uh, Brooks? And then Jerry.
Say, thank you. Um, I'm interested in your perspective on um who is supposed to implement these plans. Uh, there's been some suggestion at the Assembly that somehow Girdwood was responsible for implementing some portions of this plan, but you just described it as an H L B plan. And I know in my mind, it would be logical for the for the owner of the plan to be responsible for implementing it. So if you could comment on that, thanks.
So I I I think I understand the question, but it it's really, you know, what's the role of the plan and how is the plan used, I think, is really the the question you're asking. And uh so that plan, uh again, it it was adopted by the Anchorage Assembly. So what that plan does is any development that is proposed in that area has to be in conformance with the plan um and meet the plan's general consistency. Does that answer your question? Um, you can further clarify it if you'd like.
I don't think it really answers the question, but there's other people in line, so I'll just let them go.
I think they were on the phones that weren't muted, but anyway.
We got it.
Jerry, go ahead.
Yeah, so if if that Crow Creek Plan is the plan that's being used, that plan states that any development would come off of Crow Creek Road. This development comes off of High Tower Road. So this development is not in compliance with that plan, correct?
Uh, so that's actually not correct. The two thousand and six plan actually shows a very conceptual plan that shows connections to Crow Creek Road, but in the actual language of the plan, it does state the need for a connection to High Tower.
I didn't see that. I'll have to look again. Thanks.
Okay, we'll go to Brett.
Oh, right. I think Jerry basically answered the question, and and I shared some of the same concern that that there was no real impact study or any discussion of traffic from High Tower Road in the Crow Creek Neighborhood Use Plan. And so that was my question as to whether or not that was a substantial change to the Crow Creek Neighborhood Use Plan and how the planning department um would view such a substantial change and whether or not there would be some look as to the impact of the High Tower corridor and impact to the school area um and such over such a long period of time. So that that was the root of the question. I kind of concur with Jerry there that I saw in the plan that it was accessed via Crow Creek Road only. Uh, thank you, Ryan.
Sure, so there's a couple of questions there, and I hope I catch them all here. So High Tower, both High Tower and Crow Creek Road are classified as collectors within the Official Streets and Highways Plan, uh meaning that they're de- uh supposed to be developed to a higher standard and accept a higher level of traffic. Um, the two thousand and six plan, um, as I stated before, it does state the need for a connection to High Tower within the language of it. Um, it it's it's difficult, and that concept land use plan that's shown because there's a big old red star um near where this the current school is. So it's kind of hard to tell, are they showing a connection or not? But um in the language of the plan, it does state the need to connect to High Tower. And then the last point I will make is there's other uh health and safety concerns that need to be factored in as well, and that would be secondary access. So depending upon how many homes actually go in there, um if and when, um, secondary access will be required if it surpasses a certain number. So a connection to High Tower Road also makes sense for health and safety concerns.
It's based to, it's based to.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Brooks, do you have another one? Am I muted?
Um, I thought I put my hand down, but maybe I don't know how to run this thing. Oh, yeah, I didn't. Um, but yeah, sure, I'll come up with another question. Uh, I'm 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 struck by the fact that C Y Investments, uh, when it responded to the RFP, said that this plan had been expired, and I'm wondering if you have any knowledge as to whether that was based on input given to them by the planning department.
Uh, so C Y Investments is welcome to write and make any determination that they would like to. Um, but they do not enforce Title twenty-one or regulate it. Uh, the planning department does. So if they came to an erroneous conclusion, um, I can't speak to how and why they got there. Um, all I can speak to is the determinations that the planning department has made.
Okay, we'll go to uh Michelle Weston.
Hi there, I just one more question. Um, if the secondary access is required, which I would assume it would be, um, is the plan that with the municipality then make the Crow Creek Road for that portion um up to municipal road standards? And then would it transfer from a D O T road to a municipality of Anchorage Road for that portion of it as well? And would that involve having lighting and all of the things that go along with a municipal road?
That that's a really good question. Um, as with any subdivision, big or small, um, when it comes to road improvements, we do evaluate rather whether or not the rational nexus, is what we call it, has been met. So whether or not the off-site improvements that we are requiring, um, you know, effectively make sense, or does it completely render the subdivision completely infeasible? Um, as to your other questions about who would take over maintenance and exactly what it would look like, um, I know Kyle's in this meeting here. Kyle Kelly could probably speak to that in much greater detail than I ever could.
Yeah, yeah, I'll address that because I've asked this question. You know, it was a legal determination that Crow Creek Road is a D O T owned road. It's been since uh it was originally formulated as a farm market road. Um, and D O T uh chooses not to maintain it in the winter past the bus turnaround, uh but does provide minimal maintenance in the summer. Um, and that's up until the um the Upper Crow Creek Neighborhood, which then enters into a M O A right-of-way. Um, so at this point in time, that road is not part of the Girdwood Service area. Um, and that section that could be for improvement uh is under uh D O T management. Um, you know, the most recent improvement you would see out there is they place signs uh for no camping uh in that area. So they have taken up an enforcement practice in that area. Uh, let's see, somebody's got their mic off. We can hear you shuffle papers that you.
It's still Brooks.
No.
Anything else, Ryan, after what Kyle said? Sorry for interruption.
Uh, no, thank you. No- nothing to add. Kyle spoke very eloquently.
Thank you, Kyle, for that clarification too. I'll go to Soren. Your hand is up.
Yeah, uh, hi, hey, thanks for coming out to Girdwood. Um, so I was actually on the uh Board of Supervisors when A W W made their proposal to um put a water line in. But they never um sold the water line as a pot potential development water line. They always told Girdwood that this was going to be a backup because obviously the consternation of the community about even the the hint of a of a development um in that area by the Iditarod Trails, the so-called Holton Hills, was such a potential controversy that A W W straight are clearing that. I'm just wondering if, like, the intentions of these utilities going on record and saying things makes any difference at all? Or I I'd heard you earlier say something like, well, there's a water line there for housing. It was never intended to be that. Uh, according to A W W, it was intended to be a bypass in case there was a a water break, main breakdown. So it'd be interesting to hear what you have to say.
Uh, so thank you. So I I I don't work for Anchorage Water and Waste Water Utility. I can't speak to anything that they have said or or will say. Um, the only thing that I can point to is in the two thousand and six plan, it does state um the planned use of a water main extension. Um, and that was in two thousand and six, and the water main was put in in two thousand and eleven. So there was already a plan in place for residential development to go in, and that water line was put in there to serve a large number of residences.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other questions online? We'll go back to in the room. Kelly?
Yeah, I'm not so sure it's as much of a question, but maybe a redirect of the conversation. I think I really appreciate the clarification that that Ryan's offered, and and I have some questions about some other elements of two thousand and six that seem to be different now. That notwithstanding, um, what struck me is your comment that the Assembly is who approved that, and so it's the Assembly who would require an update. And I think Betsy's comment and anecdotally all of our experiences that we live in a different world in two thousand and twenty-three than was, which I'm presuming next year will be different than two thousand and six, but hey, what do I know? Uh, I would like to go back to the original agenda item, which is asking G boss to write a letter of support requesting that the Anchorage Assembly require an update to the area master plan before they'll consider disposal of this land. I mean, it sounds like it's their document, and we have, you know, a lot of reasons why two thousand and six is not two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. And it seems like, you know, and then we have a lot of ways Holton Hills is different, whether it's Crow Creek Road, moving the Iditarod Trail versus not. This neighborhood land use plans um dictates twenty percent affordable housing. I mean, there's there's a lot of things that either need to be applied or updated. Um, and it just seems to me like that's what we need is is the update. It's the due diligence for everything that's going on and and uh and we know it's a different world. So so I actually think that if anything, this conversation's really validated my request that G boss write a letter of support, that the Assembly not consider disposal of this land until the area master plan is updated to reflect current conditions.
Mike?
Oh, did you have again?
I had a question about, again, sorry, back up one second. And then, um, so I I had a good just a clarification question for Ryan, if that's okay. Ryan, again, thank you for um showing up. Really appreciate it and all the questions. Uh, did I understand currently that uh you basically have a standing question about where the community sees the flaws with the use of Crook Creek Neighborhood Plan, or more specifically, where the community sees the uh disconnect between what that plan is stating and what is happening? Do I understand that that's kind of a standing question that you're seeking an answer for?
I wouldn't say that I'm seeking an answer for it right this moment, um, but you know, with Um, but you know, with future development entitlements going, you know, in in the works and that applications are likely to be submitted to the planning department in the future. If the Girdwood community feels that the 2006 plan does not accurately reflect current conditions. I think what I am just speaking for myself personally, not speaking for the department on this, but I think we're confused, you know, I'm confused. What aspects of the 2006 plan um, does the community feel is flawed? Other than a simple exercise of updating numbers? In terms of homes are, you know, if if I could oversimplify it, but in terms of homes are more expensive and there's more people. Um, and then, you know, breaking out the short term rental issue, too. Um, if it's an issue with short term rentals, I I think that that's a bit separate um, and can be dealt with separately. So I I guess I I would just ask the the community um, to really hone in on what they believe is flawed about the plan. Um, when you are looking to formulate your comments and and future resolutions regarding any developments within this area.
Thank you, Ryan. Follow up or?
Is there a follow up on that or did you want?
Mike?
Yeah.
No, okay.
Jennifer.
Okay, um, so I I would say, and again, I don't know that I can speak for the community, but I would say what I heard, what I am hearing is both concern over the legitimacy of the plan to begin with. And yes, I do think that we have some answers to those questions about whether or not this is still valid. But the other, the other thing that I would say is that um, I think the uh, that there's also a perception that this plan is being selectively applied, kind of cherry picked. So that certain aspects are that are viewed as important while other aspects are not. And that is also problematic for the community. So it sounds like we have some follow up work, but we could, we could do uh, and I think I'll just leave it at that and that's it to Mike.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, again, thanks, Brian, for clarifying. I think this is helpful to for us to understand the most effective way we can uh, we can share what we what we see as the problems with that plan. I I had a, we spent quite a bit of time talking about plans we have in the past. I've got a question about plan in the future. Um, when a development has to be consistent or when any project has to be consistent with all adopted plans. Um, given that we have a comprehensive plan or area plan, our overall area, Girdwood area plan is in the process of uh, of being updated. And our current schedule is for that to go through the adoption process in 2023. So uh, which will be coincident with um, some of the planning activities. So when a new plan comes in um, during this process, uh, at what point does the um, the projects under consideration have to be consistent with a plan from, you know, when that, when the project is executed? Versus plans from a couple of decades ago?
So, um, Mike, kind of to clarify your question, are you sort of asking if the development is to be decided upon in May, but then the the area plant update is going to be in June? How's that play out?
So I'll be more specific. I'll be more specific. So um, one of your questions is how do we, how do we see the needs of the community now differently to how they were seen in 2006? And what specifically is deficient in 2006? Part of that is addressed in the work we're doing right now to um, to update our overall comprehensive plan for Girdwood. So some of those questions will be answered when that plan is adopted. Um, my question though, really is, does that matter? If the plan is adopted in, let's say, October next year, does that have any relevance to projects which may have started the planning process? But won't actually be uh, you know, executed, they won't be constructed until 2004, 2005, 2006. So at what point does a newly adopted plan influence things which are ongoing?
Yeah, yeah. So if something is ongoing, um, i- in my job responsibilities, I have to uh, review projects against plans that are active, that have been effectuated. I can't necessarily review against a draft plan that hasn't been approved yet and adopted. So it and then as those plans are adopted, there's there's typically clear guidance put in them or there should be clear guidance that puts it in there that they supersede such and such plan. Or this is a supplement of such and such plan. So that way it helps us kind of know where do these fit in the in the role and um, review process. Um, but you know, kind of, and and the short answer would be whatever plan is effective at the time of the decision date for such application, that's going to be the plan that we review against.
Okay, so it's the it's the decision date rather than when you write the staff report. I know they're close. But we may be, we may be talking about these differences. I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, Jennifer?
Sorry, one other uh, one other clarification point. You mentioned uh, Ryan several times that uh, HLB is essentially the owner or instigator of the Crow Creek Neighborhood Plan. And then you talked about uh, that's that plan is valid until such time as it becomes revoked or um, expired. Can you clarify a little bit on what if you take for that plan to expire? Because I was a little unclear from the answer you gave. So Kelly, can you just?
Yeah, so in chapter nine of Title 21, it refers to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You know, in this case, the the you could replace Planning and Zoning Commission with Anchorage Assembly since they were the approving uh, decision making body on that plan. It states in code that the applicant of the area master plan notifies Planning and Zoning Commission that, you know, they are no longer interested in in pursuing this plan and they want to go um, develop a new plan or um, you know, take the development in a different direction and restart over. Um, or, you know, say in the plan itself, it specified a given date that it was going to be effective until. Um, you know, that that's that's what we would be going by if if the Assembly decides to take it upon themselves. Um, to, you know, as part of the land disposal, um, require uh, an update to the area master plan um, or a new area master plan, that is entirely up to the Assembly. Um, on what they would like to do, but given that they were the original decision making body, um, the decision would rest with them.
Good thinking.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Thanks again, Ryan, for all these thorough answers. Anything else from the board on um, questions anyway?
Yeah, so well, not so much a question for Ryan. Again, I'd like to say a huge thank you to uh, for answering all these questions, right? But I wanted to uh, respond to the the specific thing that was involved in this.
Great.
Um, in item 14. So um, I think that I think we're gathering information and definitely I heard, I heard a specific um, a specifically useful thing we can start doing of you know, being very specific about the things that are that we see as being wrong with the 2006 plan. Um, so I think it's a bit premature, it's a little bit premature to um, to write a letter of support or um, sorry, write a letter of objection or support or resolution at the moment. But I do think we need to, we probably would need to discuss this when um, we have our next meeting in early January. Um, so I'd like to suggest we uh, we do background work and discuss this again in uh, January the 4th, probably, or maybe the 6th. Sorry, January the 4th or the 10th, whichever we schedule that next meeting.
Right, next meeting.
Nice.
Fourth or ninth?
The fourth or the ninth. Thank you. Thank you. I've got their attention.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for that suggestion. Uh, Jennifer?
So could you just clarify for me, like, what background work is?
So um, so specifically uh, identifying what what is, what is wrong with the 2006 plan? So we can be very specific in what we're requesting. Why the 2006 plan does, we do not believe meets the requirements?
Okay, can I ask another follow up about that? Uh, does that mean that this could be an item on the, you're saying that that this could be an actionable item for the fourth or not?
I think so, yeah.
Right, okay, just call.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So um, we we have something to do between now and when we next discuss it. But I think we can, we'll be in a better position to decide what to do when we discuss it at our next meeting. So I'm going to suggest we we move any action until then. We have to vote or anything until, I don't know, something. Um, but continue this.
Okay. So I I would interpret that as not necessarily a motion right now, but uh,
Well, I'll make it a motion. Let's so let's uh, let's delay action until the uh, our next meeting on the 4th.
Yeah, delay action or continue discussion.
Nice.
Fourth night. Flip it up, say that. Any other um, do we have, do we need, let's, we do need a second if that's the motion. So I would entertain a second. Okay, thanks, Jennifer. Uh, go ahead, Guy.
Oh, did Jennifer second that?
She did, but do you can second?
I was going to, but that's fine. I I agree that just a little more um, due diligence on our part. So when we write this, um, the community agrees with it and um, it is very specific to what um, the differences are between now and and the 2006 plan.
Thank you, Guy. Any other discussion on the board here? All right, any objections to talk about this and continue it on the next meeting? We'll go by assent on that. So thank you, everyone, for that discussion. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you again, Ryan, for your presence this evening and all your knowledge. And go on to Back to Old Business on number six.
This is Ryan's last.
Agenda item LUC 202201-06, Girdwood Industrial Park Concerns, Power Plating and Others. Back to Land Use Supervisor.
Okay, so um, I reached out to all the people. I got a list from um, HLB about, from all of uh, all of the permit holders and leaseholder. And I reached out to uh, everyone who's contacted information and I got back a quite a lot of different issues at the industrial park, some of which I was aware of and some of which I wasn't aware of. There were new comments that I hadn't heard before. Um, I compiled them, but I haven't been able to do much more with them. Hope that it's been taking a little bit of time up. Um, so what I'd like to do is uh, is push this back again to the, to our next regular meeting in January. And we'll compile that and have hopefully a bigger discussion then.
Thank you, Mike, for all the work on that amongst lots of other things. And so we'll push that to January. Yes. Table that.
The regular meeting.
That request. Thank you. Okay, any other questions there, Guy?
Yeah, just, Mike, real quick, um, I know this has been an ongoing thing and and working with HLB. And are we in discussions with HLB on this actively? It's got to be. I know it's been brought up quite a bit. Um,
I mean, yes, in a sense, sorry.
During the Holton Hills discussions, but I just, um, yeah, I was curious if HLB and like who on staff is there that we're working with?
I've I've uh, I've discussed it with them and then there's no action on it on their side at the moment. Um, they're aware of the uh, of the discussion that happened uh, earlier this year about potentially putting this out as a contract, um, but nothing is happening to it. So uh, I think that's why we can, we can wait a couple of weeks and have a more robust discussion here first. Get some specific, some specific asks.
Okay, yep, no, I appreciate your work on it and I just know that um, there's folks down there that have been looking for resolution for a while. So um,
Yes.
Good to see. If we just keep, keep, keep going forward, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Guy. I would echo that, Mike, so thank you. Uh, and offer help if you need assistance, too. Uh, number seven, there's nothing else there. Discuss parliamentary procedure training options for GBOS and committees. Jennifer?
I appreciate those patients on this. Uh, I would once again ask, at least in January, you've got so much else to talk about.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Anything else on that? From anyone? Okay, we'll move to number eight. Girdwood Fire and Rescue Board of Directors request for GBOS Resolution of Support for CERT Funding from Emergency Management Funds Not to Exceed $2,000 and Community Wildfire Protection Defense Funds of an Amount TBA.
Hi there, uh, it's it's Michelle Weston, Fire Chief for Girdwood Fire Rescue. Um, I would like, all I need is a just a, I just like the, when you talk at the quarterly meeting uh, with the MOA to remind them that uh, there should be state funding available for the CERT team as it's passed through to the municipality emergency management. And then also, there's a lot of federal wildfire funding coming through and we need our brush truck replaced. And so that would be a perfect opportunity to use that funds, so not to forget about us when they're applying for federal and state funding. And I provided uh, Guy with a a possible statement that, just a one sentence statement that could be said um, in uh, to at the quarterly meeting. That's all this is.
Thank you. Uh, I'll let Guy go ahead and then we'll ask him questions. Guy?
Sure. Um, yep, no, I just, um, I agree, uh, Michelle and would it, would it enhance your position at all if we did write a letter of resolution? I'd be happy to help with that. But um, as a, along with our statement during that quarterly meeting.
Uh, sure, if you, if you'd like to, that's great. I know that you guys are super busy tonight. I just, I just think it's worth being, reminding them that there is funding, especially for the CERT team, that all the other, you know, boroughs and that, they're, they use their pass through funding uh, for that, for the CERT team. Um, and then um, you know, wow, lots of wildfire money. That's an, it's an opportunity. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else here in the room? Uh, just to be redundant, is that the quarterly meeting that we have with MOA, GBOS?
The one coming up in January, I think this is what she's talking about.
Got it. Great.
So I would, um, if I could, I I'd be happy to work with uh, Chief Weston and and write that resolution. Um, so we'll have it ready for the, that meeting if we can um, that the board's fine with that.
You can make the motion, Guy.
Sure, um, I would make a motion that we will, um, I would like to make a motion that the board would write a resolution to support a CERT funding for emergency management funds, um, not to exceed $2,000 in community wildlife protection defenses, defense funds, um, to be determined.
Thank you, Guy. So we do have a move for those funds. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion? Any objections? Okay, we'll go by assent on this and look forward to the resolution at then, the next meeting before the quarterly meeting. Thank you, Guy, and thank you, Chief Weston. Going to number nine, review and vote on proposals for racial equity community engagement through the Alaska Humanities Forum from Girdwood Parks and Rec 406 account for community forum to be held on diversity. Guy?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so as I presented last week, I um, or last meeting, that I'd been talking to the Alaska Humanities Forum on on putting together proposals for a couple of options um, for uh, racial equity forum here in Girdwood. Um, we had the option one and option two after discussion last month and more discussion with the forum. I would like to propose option number two. Um, it would be a um, series of three conversations, probably three weeks apart, starting in late January. They suggested um, uh, for what our resolution that was written, um, that the probably the best topics would be um, salmon berries and sagaloo, which is in the proposal. Uh, context includes and alternate realities racing class. Um, I'm sorry, I said those in the wrong order, that the starting one would be the salmon and um, sagaloo and then racing class and then followed by context and clues. So that is what I'm proposing. We did receive a revised um, update on this. And it would be $1,605. Um, they, they need a minimum of 12 participants and a maximum of 24. So if the community room was available, I think you could, you know, be large enough to um, hold this or if we didn't look for somewhere else. But I would, I would propose the community room um, for this as well, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Guy.
Yep.
And thank you for all of your work on this. Uh, are there any questions for Guy? Jennifer.
Sorry, Guy. I just, I just missed it. I blinked out right when you said it. Can you, can you say again which things you're looking at, which ones you're proposing?
Sure. Um, so in option two, that you follow me there?
Yes.
Sure. Okay. Um, there's one called salmon berries and sag alu. There's one called context and clues and one called alternative realities, race and class. And, um, through my discussions with the forum and reading the resolution that the G B S had written, these fit are, um, what the resolution I think was, was trying to accomplish.
Thank you. You got the order of them, Jennifer? If I want.
I don't mind the order. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. I do have a quick question and maybe you said it last time, Guy, but would registration for this based on the, the minimum and maximum participants, would it be through four valleys?
I don't have a, I was late in asking four valleys about that. I've, I've made some phone calls today, but I know they're busy. Um, I, I think that would be a, uh, an option, um, but I sure couldn't speak for them. But yeah, that'd be a great way to, um, work with them and it would be a no fee. No fee for participants, but that might consider, um, some of their time and a small fee for that. In addition to the proposal we see in front of us.
Okay, great. Uh, I guess any other questions I could take offline, but I would just be concerned if the roads were bad or if there were 11 people or 10, would we still be paying for the, um, the first class? Or if people sign up for two, but not three? Is that too much in the weeds?
I know it's a good question, but, um, I, I think there can be pretty flexible. It sounds like to me, um, their staff, they, I think they have some availability so they could work with us on that. And, um, I think it's just a, a matter of getting the word out to get to that minimum of 12. So I, I think we can reach that. And then of course, if it's, um, bad weather, I can't ima, I will double check, but I can't imagine they charge us for a trip down here if they aren't coming. So, um, but no, well, um, I could find out the answers to those questions for sure.
Thank you. Mike?
Can I, um, make a motion that we approve up to, I think I heard 1,605 purchases run up and we'll approve up to $2,000. From Gerwood Parks and Rec 406 account, uh, for the community forum to be held on diversity.
Thank you, Mike. We have, um, motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
That's Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. And discussion or questions?
No, I, I do appreciate the idea of the little bit additional funding in case, um, just to cover i- if we do get four valleys to step in. I know their time's precious too, and, and they have paid staff. So, um, yeah, I appreciate that.
Jennifer, do you have something?
No, it was related to that. I'm just clarifying. We don't actually know our dollar, uh, our exact dollar. So rounding up.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't understand.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, Kyle, can we do roll call?
Sure. Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
A motion passes five zero.
Great. Thank you. Uh, number 10, agenda item L U C 221105. L U C recommendation for G B S resolution of support for community transportation programs. Grant application for timberline, drive, veil, tee paving. I'll let the, uh, speaker talk about number parts. Amanda or Kyle?
I can, um, read the amounts, um, but Kyle's the one who gave me the numbers. So I don't really have much as far as explanation for that. Um, but yeah, it's a two, wait, sorry. I'm pulling up the agenda so I can see it. Um, oh, thank you. Um, so 1.7 million, uh, total project cost and 1.5 million for the C P C T P. And then it does need a match, minimum of 9% match. And then every, I think it was 2% increase from the 9%, you get a point. And so like, there's scoring rate for grants and, uh, you want more points. So, um, I think we, we put in our initial application, putting 11%, so that came out to about 200,000 in match from G B S A funding to create that 1.7 million.
Correct. Yep. And, uh, and this would get us funding for the repaving there of, uh, that section of timberline from, uh, the church up to just past Vale up to Loveland. Uh, we did receive questions today as to why we thought this was important. And, um, and we wanted to restate for the record that, you know, this is the, probably the most condensed travel section of gravel road in Gerwood as it feeds both the subdivisions off of Timberline, Vale and beyond. And due to the nature of this intersection, the way it connects in with, from down Vale into Loveland, um, it just has a poor drainage, just the way the, the two angles of those roads come together and everybody taking a left or excuse me, a right to go down Timberline and everybody taking a left to go up Vale. It just causes it for erosion during our whitest events. So if anything, if we spend any money in one particular area the most to do constant repair, it's this section of the road. Um, and so what we would hope for is to, uh, strip pave this area, look at traffic calming measures in this area, which probably could include speed bumps or speed humps, I should say, uh, that would be designed to work well with our, uh, operations for snow removal. Um, there's a, there is a belief and, and in some cases it is true that speed, humps or bumps can be hard to work with in snow removal. Uh, but if they're designed right and, um, I have to talk directly with our contractor about this. He says if they're designed right, then they're easy to work with. If they're designed wrong, then yes, they become a nuisance. And so, um, so that would be very important to the design process to work this out. Um, and then, you know, our overhaul goal is that we hope that improves pedestrian access through there. Um, by having more designated shoulders narrowing the lane width so that cars aren't, right now it's pretty wide in there. So cars can go everywhere and they do when the potholes are there. So the road just gets wider and wider. By having a designated lane creates true shoulders which people can walk on. And there's definitely a differential between where the road is and where the pedestrians, um, are walking. So, so that's the goal of this project.
Thank you, Kyle. Mike?
But this is, uh, this, this is going to require kind of going through the planning process and getting a variance for the, for the standard, um, construction track profile.
It's gonna be a lot of work in flushing out design that works with the neighborhood and our snow storage issues and our, um, um, requirements in our code. So it'll be a bit of a complex issue, but there are stand, there are already, uh, proven examples out there that work for this.
Is, is there a, is there a risk Oscar balloon because we end up having to do some of the things we don't want to do?
Yes.
What would that be?
Always a risk.
But at that point, we can, we decide not to go ahead, I guess.
Yes. Yeah. And, you know, and what's nice about going through a federal funding aspect is that we can get a lot of this work done and we're not using up our precious capital dollars that we're raising through tax revenue. So.
Uh, Guy?
Yeah. Did you call on me? Is that?
I did.
Okay. Um, yeah, was, have, have we heard interest from the community and is it an option to, for a, a bike path along this paved road? Are we considering that?
We'll definitely consider it. Problem is we need snow storage. And so we have no snow. Um, dump here or, you know, place to take snow. And I'll, I'll give you a perfect example of this. Uh, uh, Timberline's fully developed out in that section. So every residential house has been built. There's a driveway every, uh, 20 feet. Um, Verbier is sort of a example of this where they put a, a disconnected bike path that goes down it. And now those lots are starting to fill in and we're quickly running out of snow storage there. The advantage we have there is we have a steep hill. And so with snow blowers, we can blow that snow up onto the hill and we still have an undeveloped tract at the end, um, where we can push a lot of snow. But once that area fills out, we're going to have a big problem there trying to keep the bike path open, keep the roadway open, keep the driveways open and store snow, um, in that location. So, so this will be a challenge to the design processes. How do we tackle all that, knowing that we have to keep snow within the right of way prism there?
Thank you, Kyle. Uh, Guy, do you have anything else there?
No. Yep. I just, yeah, I appreciate the, um, it sounds like the thought of that's going into this whole process. So appreciate that.
Hey, Kaylee.
Um, I, as a member of G T C, I was just going to say that yes, there's absolutely, um, interest in more availability to bike into town. And Timberline as a walking is very difficult. So I think the pathway is something people would be interested in. But I knew that, or I know that, um, cause we've talked about it before, that snow storage is an issue. So hopefully that doesn't end it. Um, you know, it might, but it's a discussion. So thank you.
Yeah. Alternative idea that has been thought about is that there is an undeveloped right of way coming off of Alpine Meadows. Um, that goes down what is Kitsville now and goes through the back there. And that's a 40, that's a 40 or 60 foot right of way that goes through there. It's a utilities. Yeah. Um, and that could be turned into a pedestrian pathway through there, um, which would give you access directly to, uh, uh, Alaska Highway and, and the proper crossing that could be put in over to, um, the airport side of that side. So those are alternatives, which then gives you a, a avenue that is only pedestrian only, um, and you can use that route. Probably won't catch much favor with the neighbors who have enjoyed that right of way all this year is not being developed, but it gets brushed out every year by the, uh, shoe gas right now. So there is kind of a rough right of way. There's kind of a rough path through there now. And so that, that could be alternative in the future for development.
Yeah. Thanks, Kyle.
Uh, Jennifer? Um,
I guess I'll send it up.
Yeah. Guy, your hand's still up just in case.
Really?
Wave and, uh, anything else on the board?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you for your work on this. Um, as you know, I'm pretty familiar with this, this area. And I want to say I, you know, I've had some questions too about kind of why we're doing this. Um, I wanted to ask first of all, uh, have you, have you heard any negative feedback yet about this plan, like specifically from people along Timberline there? Cause I, I know someone lives in that area. I'm just thrilled, but I, I just was curious if there was other.
Well, I think the negative would be that people are worried about increased speed when you pave it and that people would go faster. But you have to also think about right now, it's like in a paved condition. It's just ice and, but people drive like it's paved. So if anything, we've been told time and time again by planning department that we cannot put any traffic calming measures in on a gravel road. So in order to get those traffic calming measures, we have to pave it. So, uh, speed bumps or speed humps in that area would allow us, we could put those in if it was paved. So I think that, I think the, the negative is that it could be, um, uh, you know, increased traffic and speed through there. But I mean, not, not traffic, traffic is increasing no matter what. The residential areas have filled in the last 10 years. So we're seeing more and more people going back there. And then Virgin Creek Falls is a huge attraction now. So we're seeing people go back for that. So, so the traffic's there. Now it's a matter of seeing if we can calm it. And by doing it, you have, you have to pave it in order to get those calming features to come in, uh, in that aspect. And another negative maybe is it just takes away from the rural aspect in that area. But one thing I've heard from the neighbors in that area is that they would like to see traffic calming measures. They would like to see better desk, dust control because there's so much traffic going through there. When we apply the calcium, it dries up pretty quick because it's just constant road traffic. Um, you know, and also, uh, dampening the noise in that area because it gets so potholly. Those neighbors who live along there are just listening to people's cars hitting those potholes that we can get them fixed, which will fix them. And then three days later they'll be back. So, so it's just, it, you know, it's just kind of chasing your tail what goes on there because there's just so much traffic in that area. And so it's almost to the point where it's, it needs this to happen.
So I would just like to tag on to that saying that, um, I would agree that in summer it can sound like flat, but it's full of wrenches going by with all, uh, um, cars hitting potholes, but also because we're at that intersection right there, uh, we've had four cars land in our yard, jubbling in the yard. And several of those, and all but one of those have been in summer because it's skidding off of the potholes in the ground. And so I, I think that that, you know, that doesn't necessarily get reported. I think this area is more dangerous than is recognized sometimes because if they're doing that, then if there was a pedestrian there, obviously that. And so I just wanted to say thank you again for this.
And hopefully get the funding. We'll see what happens. So.
Thank you. Amanda?
Thank you. I, um, wanted to also mention that, uh, it's not paving the whole of Timberline. It's a pretty small section. So, um, they would still have that, uh, uh, calming in the, uh, gravel road for the rest of it. And then also, um, I think there's a big interest in paving that section because of, yeah, all the traffic and the dust is really in the summer. And that if we do get funded, there will be a public process for, uh, in the area of the paving. So, thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Uh, Mike?
Uh, can I just, yeah, resolution. Dash two seven.
You may. Do we have a second for the resolution?
I'll start.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any further discussion? Okay, Kyle, would you like to do a roll call?
Sure. Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard? Amanda Sassy?
Uh, yes, I don't, I guess you didn't hear that.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, everyone. And we'll look forward to more on that one. Number 11, L U C 221106, L U C recommendation for G B S resolution of support for community transportation program. Grant application for fish passage culvert to replace existing non-compliant culverts at Mount Hood, Davos and Lake Tahoe.
Thank you. Um, so this one's going to be similar in the same total for the project. Uh, 1.7 million with the same 11% match. So 200,000 from the G V S A, which we actually, I think already have funds set aside for through tax collections. So, um, not also the, we have an engineer plan, uh, ready to go. So this is way more further along in, uh, toward completion.
Thank you, Jennifer. Go ahead, Kyle.
And these plans are, uh, fully finished. Uh, uh, H D R finished them for us last year. So we have actually direct engineer cop testaments for all this. So this, this application is the strongest of all of them because we're shovel ready on it. We just need the money. So, uh, um, and these culverts do provide a vital link. They are the connection to the airport. Um, and, uh, the secondary access down Davos to the airport. So, um, so we hope that this application makes it strong because D O T is considering these applications. So, so yep, it's something we've been working on for probably eight years. So we're almost there. Look for this funding comes through.
Exciting. Mike?
So again, thanks for all the work that's led up to this. So I'd like to move, uh, resolution 2022 dash two eight.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second?
I'll start.
Thank you, Jennifer. Discussion and Guy?
Yeah, just, um, yeah, I appreciate the work that staff has put in on this. Um, have we? You probably have, but, um, have you explored US Fish and Wildlife, uh, funding for any of this?
Uh, there is a current grant application cycle out for, uh, fish culvert replacements. We are going to go through the process, but we're just going down both avenues to see what comes in. Uh, what we've learned with that, uh, funding source for fish culvert replacement is it really is, um, written to be focused towards lower 48 projects, uh, but Alaska is open to it. So it does make us a little bit concerned that they really won't look at Alaska, a little more look at lower 48, but, uh, we will still go through the process of applying. Just any federal application, it's always just super cumbersome to get them through. So we'll just, we'll, we're working with a potato company to help us with that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Um, thank you for that. Anything else? Okay. Uh, Kyle, could you please do a roll call vote?
Sure. Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard? Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Motion passes five zero.
Right. Moving on to number twelve. Gerwood Trails Committee Recommendation for GBOS Resolutional Support for Transportation Alternatives Program. Grant application for repave of Arlebert bike path. Amanda?
Thank you. Um, so this one is a little bit less. It's um, total cost projected nine hundred thousand and still that eleven percent match. Um, so a hundred thousand for that and for out of the GBSA uh budget and. I think there's, yeah, good. Safety, which is part of the grant application, like what they were looking for. Aspects of this, and it would be great to have it repaved as we and re- and mitigated because there's a lot of water um. That has caused frost heaves and roots. Pavement. So it'd be great to, yeah, have that redone. Thanks.
Opportunity. Thank you, Amanda. Guy? Your hands up.
Sorry about that again.
Uh, what? What's the will of the body?
I've moved to. I'm moving resolution twenty-two-two-two-nine.
Thank you, Mike. We have a second?
Just talking.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anything else to discuss? Okay, Kyle, let's do one more.
Sure.
Call.
Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, great. Or do these grant applications going to the phase two? They're already in phase. Uh, number thirteen, Agenda Item LUC twenty-two eleven zero seven. LUC Recommendation for GBOS Letter of Non-Objection Regarding New Liquor License Number Sixty-one zero one. Application for Base Camp Eatery, one-nine-four High Tower Road.
Yeah, we've got the applicant on. Cool.
Sloan, you in?
I'm on the phone.
Okay, thank you.
Sloan Onwin, I'm on the phone. Do you guys can hear me?
Yes, you can hear you, Sloan.
Oh, fantastic. So my business partner, Todd, tried to make it in. And one of our trusted guys, Michael Boyer, is there in person. Unfortunately, Todd was hit on the road. His truck is totaled or his car is totaled. He's fine. Um, but that's why we don't have a presence other than uh uh Michael and your. You know, actual presence thing. But yeah, no, we're applying for a liquor license. We'd like to do that and run a restaurant and serve beer and wine.
Thank you, Sloan. Very sorry to hear about the accident. I'm glad that they are okay. I hope it wasn't. Coming to this meeting. Um. Would you like to speak?
But it's not your fault.
Uh, if you do want to speak, just come closer to that mic so we can pick you up. Um, but go ahead, Mike, if you're going to speak, I'll stop talking.
Yeah, no, I think this is um, we obviously know that that particular location has had to fill the licenses before. Um, and uh, I'd like to move the, because we just support the letter of non-objection.
Thank you. We have a second on this motion? Guy?
I did have a question, but um, I I do support, I'd like to verify something first.
Great.
Somebody needs a second first.
I second.
Oh, Jennifer.
Hey, Jennifer seconded. So Guy, go ahead and ask.
I think Sloan mentioned it just yet. So this is um, beer and wine only. Is that correct for this particular license?
Yeah, it's a restaurant eating place license. So that's, they only let you do beer and wine.
Appreciate that, Sloan. Thanks.
So I guess we should just clarify that in our, I think in our packet it says liquor license. So we'll just correct that.
All right, restaurant?
Oh, I think, yeah. So we could just correct that language.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Margaret.
Uh, guys, if I can jump in, a restaurant eating place license is a liquor license. It's just a different form of one. So.
So we'll clarify, we'll clarify that wording.
So many different ones.
Okay, we'll just say for, we'll just have something in there to say a restaurant as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Anything else? Thank you so much for both of you being here. Uh, for the record, do we need a roll call vote?
Probably should.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Bill, moving on to new business. You jumping fifteen. Consider Agenda Topics for MOA GBOS Quarterly Meeting, January twenty-third.
Well, you will have a new city manager and so um, any uh topics you have now, do we have that in the packet from last meeting?
Yeah, we have the agenda from the last one.
Let me pull it up. So here's your last one. It was basically cemetery bonding uh for twenty-three, which I think is uh on hold till twenty-four. And then housing and economic stability as a power GBOS. Is that something you want to talk with the? Again?
Um, no, I don't think so. Let's forget feedback from the, I haven't seen any review legal, but I can clarify that.
Okay. Uh, the Holton Hills Project?
Yes.
Okay. And then um. This looks like number four, kind of went with number three.
Yeah, number four was the formal vote, just um.
Was actually for you. Okay.
And then from Michelle, we heard. About the.
Cert.
Certain and other.
Yeah.
Can you send that language over to me? Guy?
Sure. Yes, yeah, yeah. But yeah, I was going to mention that as well. So.
I was saying we probably want to start discussion about issues beyond just Holton Hills. Unless Joe currently good bad house. Yeah. And housing.
Even though we'll talk about it in Jan-, well, we'll talk about in January.
Yeah, I think we just should have something.
How about industrial part? Would that be even ready?
I would probably not, but we we can discuss that at the uh regular January.
Okay. Um, Michelle's hand up and so is Guy's hand. So Chief Weston?
Uh, I just, I, could I, is it possible to get a placeholder? Um, in there? We have a a possible issue coming up, but uh, I'm not sure if it will be needed or not, but it might be. And it would be of community interest.
Well, the agenda is not set. So if you have something, you can bring it to the January meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, any other brainstorming? And Margaret, could you tell us just what day we need to do this by?
Uh, you'll do it at your January meeting?
January meeting, okay.
And then this meeting will be a week later. Um, and I did reconnect with the municipal manager's office last week about confirming our appointment. But I think I'm going to give it a little bit and then re-reconfirm. So. Um, and just to clarify for me, are we taking the cemetery bonding one off or do we want to address it because of like coming up in twenty twenty-four? Take it off?
I don't, I think off because we won't have a meeting even before then.
I would take it off.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So that leaves Holton Hills Housing Concerns in General, Fire Department. And that's it.
Okay.
We can add more.
Yeah, I don't know if it's appropriate right now, but I have to give one quick question about that cemetery funding thing. Does that mean that you're not actively recruiting support from community councils anymore on this because it's kind of. Delayed.
Oh, we, we still haven't had a meeting formally. So any of us who are scheduled to speak at a council just gave an update at the council. We did not ask for support. Or asked for anything.
So it has essentially deflated the ask.
For now, yeah.
Yes, I missed check.
Number uh, next on the agenda, if we're ready to move on, is. Sixteen, Girdwood Fire Department Request for Funding Not to Exceed Amount From Their Out-of-Area Response Revenue Account.
I would, uh, Chief Weston, are you still online here?
Yes. Do you want me to go ahead?
Please.
Um, so our uh, when we go on out of area responses to City or Whittier or Kenai, Missilboro. Or a fire call in an out of area location such as Bird reported, she doesn't pay fire taxes. Um, they are billed for fire responses. Um, all that funds is collected by the municipality and it goes into the Girdwood. Service area sort of general fund. And so we would like to appropriate that back. Uh, to the fire department because this is items that we build for. And then uh, we've paid the labor on it. We would like to appropriate that back. So there's two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two revenues in there. Um, and it would be ideal to appropriate this in January of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, when we have the final closeout of the two thousand twenty-two revenues. Uh, currently, when I last checked, about a month ago, there was about forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars there. Um, so it'd be an amount around that number. Um, and then um, we will be probably given a. Pending Anchorage Fire Department Staffing Change for EMS, going to be going back to first air for first quarter budget revisions for area-wide EMS. And so having this extra money put back into our budget will uh sort of safeguard us for any. Impacts that will happen from the uh staffing deployment change in Anchorage.
Kyle?
Uh, Chief Weston, just so you're aware, we may not know full closed end of books until January thirty-first. So this item may not be able to come up until February.
Uh, I I'm quite hap- I'm quite happy if it's on February. That would work totally fine.
Okay. So we may pin it through January and then have it ready for February. We'll wind up books first.
Yep. Oh, yeah, February. If we could just put it in February, that's great and just have a placeholder.
Okay.
Good question.
Mike?
So when we, when we do the budget for the fire department, we account for um, revenue from the fire department, which I saw included out of area response.
We do.
So um, so and then what we, what we effectively tax for is the difference between the expenditure and revenue. So um. It's already at some level, some of this is already accounted for. It already goes to the, to to pay for the account. So um, or to pay for the fire department. So I'm I'm still confused. Where's the, where's this money actually going? Is this going back into the um operating expenses? So the GBSA operating expenses account or is it going as a payment directly to the fire department?
Well, right now in the, like, for example, in the twenty-two budget, there's twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for revenue.
Right.
And uh, um, that revenue has been met this year and exceeded. And I think there is a surplus of just. Either it's four thousand or nine thousand dollars in there.
Right.
And then that revenue uh is also, uh, so like for right now in the operating uh expenses for uh Girdwood Fire, there is four dollars and thirty-three cents left. And so if there's any big bills they have to pay for repair of equipment or things like that, um, you know, there's a fund in there for thirty thousand dollars. And so if that goes over, say, we end up having. Uh, so uh, it goes over twenty-five dollars, then that revenue will help to offset that and we won't have to go pull taxes. So. So we would need to go back and look at the last couple of years that chief just mentioned here and then see what uh surplus we had left over um in revenue. Um, that could be drawn back and 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 used towards the fire.
So it's going into the operating, basically going into the operating account for the for the fire department.
Correct. That's where it all goes. And when it's, whatever surplus is used, it falls into the undesignated fund for the service there. Yep. And then usually we pull that out and use it for four oh six contributions.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
And then, and then we did have a, we just recently had a, we, the last week had a brake failure on a command vehicle. So. Um, we will be probably needing to uh use those repair funds.
Yeah, so that. So, yeah, so for any repair parts that go, they're just going to apply that. And so that revenue is going to help offset those costs.
Oh, oh, wait for the new come up.
Yeah, hopefully. Open door repairs to the new command vehicles, correct?
Uh, Guy, your hand is up.
Yeah, just I just want to verify that, you know, I think our EMS spending is not. Hard written into the uh uh budget every year. And um. The assembly budget, just this, this won't affect that or our, our, our ask for next operating year, will it? Um.
Uh, and so basically, uh, we were, well, we haven't been notified formally, uh, but the response pattern is changed. So the assumptions. On EMS deployment model, uh, that was in South Anchorage that assisted with Girdwood uh is changing. Uh, are proposed to change and that was not accounted for in when we did the budget six months ago, nor have we formally been told. And so it's important that we are, we have staffing available to cover any gaps that might occur. Um, but I know the Anchorage Fire Department wants to talk about this versus I talk about this. So um, I'm just kind of sort of, I was feeling like really good about everything up until Friday. And so now I just want to try and make sure I have all our ducks in a row. So we have the best possible service for the community.
And.
And then the the fire department received, I think, a three percent increase this last year. We had asked for a twenty percent increase, but got flat funding. Uh, so. Um, yeah.
Lena?
So I I guess one more question. When it comes time, that TBA, we will have a ballpark of what that number is?
Yes, I I have it now, but I want to, I know Anchorage wants to take the lead on messaging. So when they give that messaging, then we can follow with, I I I have the number right now. It's not that bad. Um, but uh, I just want to make sure that we have um. We, just in case they say no, and then I just want to make sure that we have a fallback position, right? So. Anyway.
Mike?
Yeah, sorry. Just to, I think, just to clarify something you said there, Chief, the um. I think you mentioned about flat funding going into next year, but there's a, there's a significant increase to fire department funding.
Yeah, yes.
GBOS going into next year for fire, but not for EMS.
Yeah, for not for EMS. And this is an impact that would directly affect EMS. So it's an EMS issue, not a fire issue.
Thank you.
Hey, anything else? Thank you, everyone, for that discussion and we'll um, see it soon on January and or February. Moving to number. Six seventeen, the Trails Committee Request for Parks Four-O-Six Account Funding to Split the Costs for Trail Crew Interns Through SCA Not to Exceed Twenty-eight Thousand. Shared with Girdwood Trails Committee Girdwood Inc. Account.
Correct. So uh, there's a lot of moving balls on this one, but we are trying uh uh to get next year two interns uh to come work. Uh, for us through the Student Conservation Association. We did this several years ago before the pandemic. Um, and they, in partnership with the US Forest Service, stayed at the bunkhouse for the US Forest Service and then worked for us all summer. Uh, being trail crew with us uh in tandem with our seasonal. Um, quite a hard time last year hiring for seasonals. Um, you know, if you've been reading the press lately, our. Pay grades within the municipality are not keeping up with the market. And so we're having a hard time recruiting qualified people. Um, and so we're hoping that this year we're going to try to uh really focus on one staff person using most of our funds to hire somebody who's qualified to be a trail crew lead. And then work through um, SCA to get two interns to help with trail maintenance for the summer. And we're going to do this in partnership with the um. The Girdwood Trails Committee, they have their own private fundraising that they've done. Um, and so they're looking to give a match. And then we're looking towards uh using funds from our four oh six. And then we're also going to chase a KMTA grant to help fund this as well. So. We're hoping in the end we don't have to use much of the four oh six, but we would like to start the process of talking about it with you guys. Um, and then getting an approval. Once we get a better focus about how we're going to make this all work. Um, one of the large things we have to figure out is we've requested the US Forest Service to house the SCA again at their bunkhouse. And they have not said no. They said they're going to look through and see what their staffing needs are. They get back to us, but they are open to the idea. So. Um, because we know there's nowhere to put them besides tents in the park. Um, so um, that it, they have a very small stipend. So that's what we're trying to work out now. So those, that's what we have going on and this is in motion. So there's really nothing definitive yet, but it will be over the next month or two.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Anything in the room? Guys, your hands still up or up again? Okay. Uh, number eighteen. US Forest Service and Girdwood Trails Committee Request for GBOS Resolutional Support for Transportation. US Forest Service and Girdwood Trails Committee Request for GBOS Resolution of Support for Transportation Alternative Program Grant Funding for Connector Trail from the Lower Iditarod National Heritage Trail to Bird to Gird Trail. Be applied for through the US Forest Service in collaboration with Girdwood Parks and Rec. Erin, are you here?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'm Erin Boone. I'm a community, community member as well as an engineer for the Forest Service, and I'll be presenting on behalf of the Forest Service tonight on a project we're working on. It may be familiar to many of you. It's been on Girdwood's wishlist and in community planning documents since the nineteen nineties. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen to share a drawing.
Oh, see if I can. There you go.
Oh.
You got it.
Is that working?
Yep.
Okay, good. So this project that we're seeking the resolution of support for, for tap funding is, it's a connector trail between the Lower Iditarod Trail and the Bird to Gird Trail. It's, it can, it could also involve possibly parking areas or a lower valley trailhead, which has also been identified as a need for a long time. So this, the trail, the connector trail itself could look like on the same, a trail that's on the same grade as the railroad, but just with wider separation. The drawing I'm showing is, you might recognize as the DOT intersection project. And we asked them to overlay this connector trail on there because this, this connector trail project is contingent on that project actually going forward because it would need the Aliaska Highway Bridge to be replaced, which is currently in their plan so that we could get a wider space to, to put a trail alongside the railroad. A section, second option is that the connector trail would be a pedestrian tunnel somewhere likely north, or, let's see, my directions, right? Yeah, likely just north of there. And as we go through the tap grant process, we'll be working with DOT to try to help us figure out which option would work best with the, with the intersection project. So the scope, you know, it's not completely defined. It depends on decisions that are made with the intersection project. I also wanted to just say that the Forest Service doesn't have an opinion on, on which, which option is chosen as far as the intersection goes. We're more focused on the trail connection piece and potentially trailhead parking. Let's see. Just looking at my notes. So you're probably aware, most of you have been on those trails. Right now, it's just a, just a user-made trail that's very close to the railroad and not a, not a safe situation for pedestrians and people on bikes traveling. So that's one of, one of our, sorry, I'm getting some feedback.
We fear you just fine. Sorry.
Okay, good.
It's awkward.
Okay. Yeah, so improving the safety is a huge part of why, why we want to move this forward. And connecting two major trail arteries in Girdwood that, you know, currently the lower INHT has had so much work recently, but you know, it doesn't, on this end of the valley, it doesn't connect to anything. And then this connection is also on the plan for the Alaska Long Trail. That this could be a possible route for connecting that trail. So lots of good things that this trail connection could improve. We don't have a cost for this, for this project yet. And through the process of filling out the second part of the application for the grant funding, DOT, the DOT planners are supposed to help us with a budget cost estimate. So we should have more information on that in January. But one huge piece of the application is that it's the community support is supportive of this project. And so that's where we're seeking the resolution of support from GBOS. And I will be attending Trails Committee meeting next month. This was just the first one that came up once we figured out that there was time sensitivity to this. So, and I have more details on what the grant actually asked for in the letter, which I can, I can provide at the next meeting.
Thank you, Erin. Any questions in the room for Erin?
Well, thank you. I look forward to hearing more about it because although probably all of us are very familiar with this trail, it looks still really close to the railroad. And any other trails like in Anchorage that are by the railroad are separated by something pretty substantial for safety. And, and all the information you find out between now and January for costs, so we'll look forward to that. Any other questions online? Kyle?
I'll just make the point that they just put a line on the map to give us or to make it official, but it's nowhere near great or where it's going to be, except that would be all flushed out through the process.
Okay, thank you. Erin did say that, but.
Well, and I, yeah, I will add also, we have had some meetings with the railroad and DOT. And so the railroad is in the conversation on this. And the, the bridge abutments would be much further apart. They, the trail would be in like the outer two hundred feet of the, or, sorry, sorry, the outer ten feet of the two hundred foot right-of-way of the railroad. And they've also indicated that they would want a barrier between, so. But yeah, this, the line on the map is very simplified.
Okay, well, yeah, just get ready for that then in January third. Anything else for Erin? Hey, thanks for staying up and being with us. We'll go to nineteen. Thanks. Discussion of how Girdwood can address long-term housing needs. Plan D supervisor.
Yeah, I think this is, we did put it on here because we were thinking about maybe starting discussion now. I think it makes more sense for this to go to the public see in January and take it up after that. So can we actually keep this as new business?
Sure.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Just giving ourselves more work in terms of having additional meetings and dealing with the difference between the crew group label and management center. So we're still dealing with short-term stuff.
We're doing a tally of all the public meetings for this year.
Record.
It's humans by all week.
Good thing we invested in all this. Anything else? Tyler, Margaret, reports are here. Thank you. There's nothing else? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Jennifer? Second for Mike. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Be safe.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.